So I am going to call this meeting of the East Hampton City Council Ordinance Committee, January 26, 2021 into session. We are meeting remotely by Zoom due to Governor Charlie Baker's order for open meetings to be remote. And we do have some minutes, so let's prove those. So I'd be happy to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from January 14 and December 22.
So moved.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Counselors, Eric.
Yes.
Counselor Pete.
Yes.
And I vote affirmative as well. So pass is three to zero. Perfect. Let me just go back here. So we have tonight, we have continuing business of adopting Indigenous Peoples' Day and replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna kill that phone really quickly. So Owen, why don't you take us away?
Yeah, so thank you Chairman Derby. So this, this is an item that, you know, I've been thinking about for a while. I think a year, over a year. So let's see, we were just in 2019 and probably around the time I got, probably when I got elected too. This has really been a proposal that I wanted to bring forward to the city council for quite some time. It's certainly an item I felt passionate about. I think that, you know, Columbus Day is an antiquated holiday that doesn't really appropriately celebrate, oh, you got it.
I got it.
Anything. I mean, it celebrates conquest and colonialism and genocide. And it's, it's really unclear why we get a day off from school and city closes to celebrate those things when the peoples of this land who were persecuted and murdered and subjugated and their lands stolen, you know, are kind of removed from the equation of discussion. And so, you know, this is a movement, certainly in this state, especially, you know, I mean, going, moving forward from Columbus Day, certainly the pilgrims were, were not exactly spectacular either in terms of how they, they treated the people native to this land. But so certainly in Massachusetts, there's a movement to remove Columbus Day and replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And as you see in the text of the resolution as well, there's multiple other places across the country that have done this appropriately. So so I was really fortunate to reach out to Indigenous Peoples' Day Mass, I think is the name of the website, and connect there with Madam Monroe, who's really been quarterbacking this, this proposal across the state and who was very kind enough to basically share resolution language with me that I crafted into something that was more relevant to East Hampton, just mostly name changes, because the, the, most of the whereas's are as they remain. Now, when I proposed this, what was really important to me is that this wasn't just words on a piece of paper that we said, say that will, will make good on. And I wanted it to have some teeth in that. We needed to have some sort of administrative language, ordinance language that actually at least made this a holiday in the city. And so, as you both know, I initially proposed this as an ordinance with a preamble that contained the language from the resolution and then some items and ordinance language to actually make it part of our, our administrative code, basically. And then, as we discussed last time, I think you, both of you, the members of the committee, both you and Counselor Pete made some good points that there was some wording in there that might make it a little complicated and slippery. And so, we decided, well, let's, let's revise the language into, into a resolution again, but had that basically be a preamble to just change the, the city ordinances to reflect the holidays that are actually observed and kind of codify that. Because it's not really codified anywhere except in administrative code for personnel reasons. So what I did, I sent you to an email earlier today, is if you look at our city ordinances, Chapter Two, Article One, which is just kind of general language around a few things, there's some salary items in there and such. I just basically listed, I got a list of the holidays that are observed in the city for the purpose of building closures and personnel reasons and some enforcement issues as well. Because as you pointed out Chairman Derby, we have signs all over the town that say, except on holidays. Well, it doesn't really say anywhere where our holidays are. So I just included all the holidays and instead of Columbus Day, I included Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I did, in the language I included, I just made a reference to the resolution. And I think we could include that in there. And the resolution will decide where that will end up in terms of, you know, our language. And I kind of borrowed that also from Ithaca. Ithaca basically did that. They created a resolution and changed their, their city code to basically just scrap, cross out Columbus Day and include Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then, you know, it's up to us, you know, the people of East Hampton, the city council, the mayor, the schools, to move forward and to make, to make good on some of these promises. Now, the other thing too, I know we discussed last time, is I really wanted this to carry over into our schools. And so I emailed the superintendent and Cindy Kuzinski, the Chair of the School Committee. And they, they, at least, I mean, the School Committee hasn't voted on this, but they both were, there was no hesitancy about the schools basically endorsing this. The superintendent offered to write a, to write a, a letter of recommendation, basically. And I think they would, I told them I would send them the resolution from the council, which they sounded at least willing to take up as business.
Right.
So I think that answers that question. And I know that they're all, they're already, they're already altering the, the curriculum in the schools to properly reflect this anyhow. So I think we kind of have a lot of those ducks in a row, so to speak. And I think I'll leave it there for now. There's, there's members of the public that came to speak on this topic, but I'll, I'll, I'll yield the floor back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I appreciate that, Counselors Eric. And, you know, and I, I think this is a really important thing for us to be doing. You know, I even, and once, once we finish this process, I would even think that it would be behoove us to look at, you know, how we name buildings and how we name areas in our community to reflect, you know, the, the people that were here before us. So I think we could even take this a step further as we go forward. But that being said, I'm happy to open it up for public comment. The only thing I would say is, all I need for you to do is to raise your hand. I can call on you, so we don't all talk at the same time. And just let us know your name and where you're from, so we can record that for the record.
Oh, Chairman, do you mind if I just slip something in really quickly?
Go, please.
So, as you know too, I mean, there's been a number of indigenous groups that have been very helpful with this measure so far, sending letters of support. I read the email from Rhonda Aronson, earlier, like at our last meeting, there's, there's a bunch of other groups. Like I said, Charlie Naru is here from the Taino people today. And we have some other representatives who sent letters and fortunately were able to speak. But I also just really quickly wanted to touch upon, you know, there's a lot of ethnic pride wrapped up in the holiday of Columbus Day from Italians. And so, one big part of that equation is kind of deconstructing Columbus Day. And like, as I stated earlier, that we need to recognize kind of the, the inappropriateness that that's based upon. So the other piece outside of the indigenous voices, to some degree, are Italian voices in this discussion. And so, I just wanted to say thank you to Italian Americans for Indigenous Peoples' Day, who also wrote a letter. And we do have a representative here, Heather Leval, who will speak also. So I just wanted to add that addendum to make sure people were recognized.
Great, thank you.
Now, now I'll pass it back to you.
So if anybody would like to speak on this issue, just raise your hand and I, okay, let me, how do I say it? Sharinu?
Charlie Naru.
Charlie Naru, okay, welcome.
Thank you. Dai karaya di ituno kenav dia tia ono. Daiiri Charlie Naru. Jahom bomatum. Good evening, my sisters and brothers. My name is Charlie Naru, and I'm a representative of the United Confederation of Taino People, belonging to the Guinean Taino Tribe. First, I want to thank you for this opportunity to address this body. I am grateful to share this space with you today, here today. As a Taino indigenous woman and a Massachusetts resident, I, living currently in Newton, Mass, which just recently passed the change from Christopher Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Woo woo! We all know the atrocities and the genocide that occurred under the leadership of Christopher Columbus. But I'm not here to reiterate the true facts about this individual. I'm here to give you some perspective on a personal note. I have a nine-year-old son, soon to be 10 next month, named Tatanikey, which means strong heart, in our indigenous language. He attends a Newton Public School. My son has been living our indigenous ways and taught the truth about Christopher Columbus since he was born. When he started public school in kindergarten, he became a target. Sorry, I have my grandson with me. Okay. My son lives, speaks, breathes indigenous ways. His appearance also cannot be mistaken. This is my son, Tatanikey. He has long hair, red skin, and dances to the heartbeat of the drum. My son has been made fun of, bullied, and called inappropriate names. He would often come home crying and feeling ashamed. No matter how many times I've spoken to the administration at the school, nothing got resolved. The following year, before school began, I again spoke about our indigenous ways and that we do not celebrate Christopher Columbus Day. When the holiday approached, my son reminded the teachers that we do not acknowledge Christopher Columbus as a hero. And yet, my son was forced to make a conquistador hat and wear it. His refusal got him reprimanded and yelled at. He felt embarrassed, belittled, and discriminated against. All he could do was sit there and cry while his rights to practice his beliefs were stomped and disregarded. He came home flushed with swollen red eyes from all his crying and told me what had happened. And that's when I said enough is enough. My son shouldn't have to feel like his life does not matter. I never want my son to come home and tell me that he wants to die or ever feel worthless because he's native and not accepted. It's time to teach the real story about Christopher Columbus. This adjustment, not only will it change history, but it will always, it will also prove that we, as citizens, will not tolerate discrimination, racism, or any other form of hate. So please, find it in your heart to restore humanity by passing this request and rename Christopher Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Jahom Seneco Ka'kona. Thank you and abundant blessings.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else like to speak? Yeah, Heather?
Hi, my name is Heather Lavelle. I'm second generation Italian American on my mother's side, and I have roots in Calabria and Abruzzo. I live and work on the ancestral land of the Massachusetts tribe. And I'm speaking you tonight, to you tonight, as a co-founder of Italian Americans for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I've been chatting with Owen, and it sounds like so far you don't have too much opposition from Italian Americans. And I'm so glad to hear that, because I have experienced firsthand the pain that they have to go through in some of these public meetings, hearing the, the lies that are repeated about Columbus. And so, it's, it's an honor for me to be able to stand up and speak the truth in these meetings. We support the work of Indigenous Peoples' Day in Massachusetts, and we stand in solidarity with thousands of indigenous peoples from many tribal nations who live in Massachusetts, who are working to rename Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we have about 600 members, but we're growing really quickly. We have members in East Hampton, and we have some elected officials who are also members, Representatives Jack Lewis, Carmen Gentile, and Lindsay Sabadosa, and also Mayor Joe Curdito of Somerville. Those are some of our elected officials, but we have others too. We believe that a holiday that celebrates the resilience of indigenous peoples is far more truthful and reflective of our values than one that honors one of history's greatest villains. We believe that any association with Christopher Columbus diminishes our culture, does not appropriately honor the struggles of our ancestors and the contributions of our ancestors. We feel that the continued heroization of Columbus compounds the intergenerational trauma that indigenous people carry with them today, which is the product of centuries of brutality inflicted on their ancestors by colonizers. And in their defense of the holiday, some Italian Americans claim that the day is not a celebration of Columbus, but rather a celebration of Italian American culture. And, you know, we feel that this is the same logic used by some Southerners who claim that the Confederate flag is not a racist symbol, but a celebration of their culture. If this was truly about celebrating Italian American culture, we have ample opportunities to do so in October, which is officially recognized in the Commonwealth as Italian American Heritage Month, and there are celebrations all month long. For some Italian Americans, the holiday commemorates a time when our ancestors overcame terrible ethnic and religious discrimination and became fully accepted into the dominant white culture. And we certainly empathize with those who feel that the prospect of renaming Columbus Day means the loss of the hard-fought acknowledgement that we deserve to exist in this country. But things are much different for us today. Now, our culture is celebrated, and we enjoy status and recognition in society. And these are privileges not afforded to native people. And many of us feel that we have a responsibility to use the platform that we now have to ensure that we are not repeating the same patterns of abuse that our ancestors endured. But we think it's really important to make a distinction between the discrimination Italian Americans endured and the attempted genocide and systemic oppression perpetrated against indigenous people. We're talking about settler colonial violence, enslavement, dispossession, and exploitation perpetrated against thousands of diverse groups of people with their own unique and distinct cultures over the course of centuries. Also remember that Columbus was purposely introduced and firmly embedded in our country's founding mythology, long before Italians even came on the scene. So it's time for us all, who are a part of this country's dominant culture, to take collective responsibility for the events of our past, for the false and incomplete telling of our history, and for our misplaced adulation of Columbus. Too often, discussions about renaming this holiday are centered around the feelings and concerns of Italian Americans. Let's please keep the focus on indigenous people, what they need and deserve, and what we all gain by choosing to celebrate them. Indigenous people are presenting us with a wonderful opportunity to take a first step toward healing and reconciliation. And we ask that you open your hearts, listen to their voices, and honor their wishes. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it. And anybody else like to make a comment on this proposal?
I think Ferris, I think Ferris is trying to get on, so he may show up eventually.
Okay, okay. Brittany, it looked like your hand was up. Would you like to make a statement? Okay.
Sure, thank you. Chao netasawis, Brittany Wally. Hi, my name is Brittany Wally. And as you can see on the screen, and if not, I am Nipmuck, and I am a anti-mascot representative. So I think deeply about symbols and what they mean to the general public when it comes to mascots in schools, but also the symbols that we see on the Massachusetts state flag and seal. So this discussion that's going on tonight easily translates to much of the activism that I do in my community. I do want to say that the things I've come with prepared tonight, they do entail some of the violent things that Columbus did. And I want to make sure that my indigenous peers here are warned of that, because it is very triggering and unpleasant to hear about. And I'm sure that they've only heard and talked about it endlessly. So I just wanted to put that out there first, if they don't want to hear those parts. So Columbus never stood in whereas East Hampton today. He's never there. He did, however, spend time in the Caribbean, including present-day Cuba and the Bahamas. And while he was there, he committed insidious acts against local indigenous peoples, specifically some tribes that are represented here tonight even, such as the Taino and Arawak and others. He was a pioneer. He was a pioneer of murder, of rape, bodily mutilation, slavery, theft, violent colonization, colonization, and ecological damage as well. Columbus is today recognized as a forefather of systemically oppressive racism. And holidays in his memory do not provide a proper platform that is capable of conveying this fact. They only help perpetuate an oversimplified version of his voyages. And this oversimplified version of history is harmful to all, across all kinds of platforms. And what it does is very difficult to resolve. It is challenging to get people to accept that they've been misled and lied to, especially when the lie was perpetuated under years, for years, under the guise of a United States historic holiday. I felt really moved to speak tonight, because East Hampton is ancestral homelands of Nipmuck people and many other Massachusetts tribes. In my Nipmuck community, I know we feel the pain of our sister nations that were harmed by Columbus. And we feel the weight of his acts despite him not being the specific person that colonized our homelands. And I know that all of us are really exhausted of explaining that Columbus did not discover anything. So I feel that kinship there. So negative symbolism, such as a holiday celebrating Columbus, it's destructive to indigenous people and our psyches, and it makes it increasingly difficult for our non-native allies and potential allies to understand these painful historic truths. Changing this holiday creates a wonderful opportunity to celebrate in your community, in East Hampton, and step on the right side of history, especially as protests for racial justice sweep across the nation. Many other cities have already taken this action to change into Indigenous Peoples' Day, and it's not too late to do so too. And I must say, I was very moved to hear about, you know, the, the words that were said for Italians, for indigenous peoples, because on a lesser note, I share Italian heritage. And I'm not one to ever split myself into percentages. That's a colonized way of thinking. But I can stand here or sit here on Zoom with you and know that my existence is a reconciliation of these communities. I can go forward as someone trying to make positive change, and I can move forward with a heart full of love that is comprised of native and Italian ancestry. So I would like to see that exemplified in the community outside of my physical being, because I know it's capable, it's possible, and it's real. It can happen within me. And that tells me that it can happen in the community at large. And I think the most important thing to remember is that this change creates a chance for people to move forward together in a positive way. So, Kada bottomish, thank you for listening tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. So again, the invitation is open. If anybody would like to speak on the proposal to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, please feel free to raise your hand and just... Okay. So I don't, oh, oh, here we go. I see a hand. It looks like Kristen Morgan. You can go ahead and unmute.
Hello. I think we just wanted to speak very briefly to say, we were, we're East Hampton citizens who, a friend informed us that this call was happening tonight. And it seemed easy and obviously correct to do this action. So we're just, all, all we wanted to say is, it seems clearly correct, and we're all for it. And so, we hope it happens.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, anybody else want, want to speak on this particular subject? It looks like Nicole.
Hi, my name is Nicole Claro. I live at 10 Arlington Street here in East Hampton. And I am here also as a citizen of East Hampton to voice my support for the name change of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I can't say anything that will add much to the eloquent and informed speakers that went before me. So I'm just here to add my voice and support. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Anybody else? And, you know, I think so, just so while people kind of contemplate, I can let you know the kind of the process. So, you know, once public speak is, is wrapped up, we'll, we'll take a look at the actual nitty-gritty of the, the change. So we have a resolution, and we also have a change to our city ordinance that would codify the holidays that we celebrate as a city. And so, and that, and that's never been done before. So this would be the first time that would be done. And that, and that would include Indigenous Peoples' Day, and it would exclude Columbus Day. So that, and basically from here, once we work through this as a committee, then it will go to the full city council, and there'll be a, basically a public hearing where people can speak again to the full council. And generally, those meetings are much more, there's more people attending. So it's a little bit of a larger format, but it is nonetheless a very good place. And I do see a hand. It looks like Sagamore is raising this hand. So please, just let us know your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Arius Gray. I'm a Sagamore of the Massachusetts tribe at Ponkapal. Currently, I live in Bridgewater, Massachusetts, which was part of our ancestral territory. My apologies for being late. I didn't really get to hear anything anyone said before I was able to log on. I had some issues logging on. So thank everybody. I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time out of their, their lives to attend this meeting. This issue of Indigenous Peoples' Day versus Columbus Day is pretty important to the indigenous community, also pretty important to all of our children. And so, I speak for the, for the Massachusetts tribe at Ponkapal. Just to put in a little context of why the indigenous people, so against Columbus, you have to understand the history between the settlers and the indigenous people, and the atrocities we face, the erasure of our culture, our religion, our language, everything is taken away from the indigenous people. And so, you know, we view that conquest or colonization of our territories as a host, act of hostility, an act of terrorism, which it was. If you can imagine, let's say, you know, there was a foreign entity that came to our lands today and did the same thing the colonizers did to indigenous people, it would be terrifying to all of us. And also, the plagues that were introduced to the indigenous population, we can kind of in a small degree relate to that by the pandemic we're facing and how much fear it caused in our lives today. And it's nothing compared to the, to the plagues that swept through all of our territories in the early part of the 1600s. So we can kind of understand the uncertainty and the fear of, of the indigenous population here upon settlement. And so, for anyone that doesn't know the things that Columbus did, or, or the people that only have the information of, that we received in school about Columbus, and the little rhymes we learned about Columbus, we didn't learn until adulthood who Columbus really was and the atrocities committed against the Taino and the Arawak people in the Caribbean. Columbus was not a nice person by any standard. Even back then, he wasn't a nice person. The rape... The rape, the murder, the conquest, intimidation, those are all acts of terrorism. That's what we view today as terrorism. That happened today, we would label the person that did it a terrorist. And so we need to understand that so we can understand why the indigenous population and quite frankly, anyone who cares, is this great push to remove Columbus Day and to replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day? Because the atrocities by Columbus, who we've all honored for far too long. Against the indigenous people, it would be epic to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's, you know, part of our healing as well in the indigenous community where we don't have to deal with Columbus. You know, there's a joke, because we joke about things to kind of mask the pain or just so we can feel a little bit better about Columbus, Columbus Day sales and all this stuff. And so there's a joke that, you know, Columbus Day and the sales. So that means we could just walk into anybody's home, walk into a store and take what we want, and then walk out and claim it all as our own, you know? So that's the joke we have in the indigenous community to kind of cope with reality that this country is honoring and putting on a pedestal a murderer, a terrorist. And it's very hurtful and it creates harm for us and our children, and also the non-indigenous children as well, to place honor on a terrorist. I mean, it's kind of insane and crazy if you think about it. But, I mean, we all, we all have our part, and we all can do something. There's some things we can't do things about, there's some things we can't. But we can get rid of Columbus Day. That's what we can do as a population to get rid of Columbus Day. We can not, we can choose not to honor a person that is not worthy of honor. And so some of the arguments that people have for Columbus is that we're trying to rewrite history, when we're not. We're just trying to make sure history is accurate and that we don't honor someone that isn't worthy of honor. And I know there's quite a few Italians who, you know, they dishonor Columbus because he was Italian. I mean, there's so many Italian great people in throughout history that are worthy of honor. Columbus is not one of them. Columbus didn't discover America. He never set foot in this country. So for us to honor someone because of an idea that he discovered a place which people are already living on, which he didn't discover anyway, it's kind of crazy. And it kind of, it kind of, you know, when you sit back and you think about it, you're like, why, why would we honor that, you know? And it just becomes like a routine, you know? We grew up honoring it, so we don't want to change because we were honoring Columbus. But as adults now, and most of us who have children, we don't want our children to honor someone like that. We can look at that and say, he was not a good person. He did these awful and unimaginable things. We do not have to honor him just because we're used to it or just because it was part of our history growing up. You know, we can change things. We can make things better, and we can make things right. And sometimes these decisions are difficult, and sometimes they're easy. Sometimes these decisions have consequences. But, I mean, sometimes you just have to do what's right. And you do the honorable thing, is what we say. You always do the honorable thing, no matter the consequences. And so we do believe that it's the right thing to get rid of Columbus Day and to replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And that's showing the indigenous population, finally, we care. We finally care that these atrocities were committed against your ancestors. We care, and we can do something to show that we care. And this is one of the things, I believe, that every single town, city who celebrates Columbus Day can do. And will they do it? I don't know. We all hope so, because we all hope, have this hope that people will do the right thing. So, you know, we, the Massachusetts tribe and the indigenous population, we just ask that you do the right thing. If not for us, for your own children, and if not for your own children, for the future children who are even yet to be here. So I'm sorry I talked so long. I could talk all day about things like this. But I'd like to thank you again for having me here to show our support and to hopefully better explain why Columbus Day is not worthy of honor. So, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks so much. So, and I'd be happy to entertain any other comments if anybody else would like to speak. And if not, you know, I think from my perspective as the chair, you know, it's really, for me, this is a moment that is really important as a tribal member of the Wampanoag Tribe of Aquina. And, you know, this, you know, thinking back in my heritage and how that shaped, you know, my family and how it shaped me, you know, this is not just, it's like, I don't even want to make it about Columbus. I want to make it about celebrating the indigenous people that were here and that were, you know, contributed so much and yet acknowledged so little. So, you know, for me, this is a proud moment to be able to bring this forward and to help make this a reality. You know, so I think that that's something that... And then I also just, you know, really appreciate what everybody said. I think that was a lot of really good information and some really good background for us to be able to deliberate this. So we appreciate everybody's input. So thanks so much. So Counselors Errett. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say quickly too, because I know people, some people might sign off and not stand up for the whole meeting, I'm not sure. But I really wanted to express how grateful and thankful I am to everyone who came. As pretty much everyone who came and spoke tonight knows, I've been persistently sending emails, and I apologize for my persistence. But I'm also grateful that my persistence paid off and to have so many important voices here speaking to this. This is, listening to everyone speak, there are different stories, different perspectives. This is potentially so one of the more powerful and moving meetings I think I've had as a city councillor. And, you know, for me to have brought this forward obviously was done as an ally, and I can't claim to speak for the voices of indigenous people. And I just wanted to kind of create space for those voices to come forward, and they have tonight. Sorry, I'm feeling a little emotional. And so I'm feeling very, very much like we're absolutely doing the right thing here. So I just wanted to say that and thank everyone who came tonight. And again, it's good to see faces of people and hear the voices of people who I've been communicating with on email. So I'm just, I'm very grateful and to meet some new people too as well. So that's it for now, but you were about to ask me something, Chairman.
I was gonna see, well, we have, we did have another letter that we didn't read. And we could, I mean, we could always read it at the public hearing. You know, it's, and since it is kind of, it's, I mean, but it does echo and enrich everything that's been said. Or we could, you know, if we wanted to wait to read that into the record to the next public hearing, we could start taking a look at the resolution and the administrative code change.
Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of hands up.
Oh, oh, okay. So how about Kristen Morgan first?
Hi, just briefly, what is the date and time? Or basically, how can we find out about when the public hearing is occurring if we'd like to attend that as well?
That's a good question. So we haven't set the public hearing yet. But I think that probably, the best way to do it would be to either shoot myself or Counselors Errett an email, and we can just reply back to you when we find, when we do actually set the public hearing.
Could it would be possible for you to leave your emails in the chat here on the, in here so that I could do so?
I don't think we have the chat enabled, but they're really easy to find. So they're on the city website, easthampton.gov or easthamptonma.gov. But, and it's also like, for me, I'm Salem Derby, so it's sderby@easthamptonma.gov.
Okay, great. All right, thanks.
Yeah, so perfect. So, and you can always, always email me, and I'll get back to you and try to let you know. So let me see, it looks like Brittany has her hand up. Someone else did before, but...
Reyna did before, I believe, but...
Okay, so maybe, so how about we go to Reyna, and then we'll go Brittany, if that's all right? Yeah. Are you still there, Reyna?
Yes, yes. Good evening. I'm sorry about that. So my name is Reyna O'Durro. I am a Taiino. Taiino, as you've heard from another speaker tonight, are the indigenous people of the Caribbean. I currently live in Webster, Mass., which is the heart of the homeland for the Nipmuck people, who is, as you've also heard before, Brittany is a member of the tribe of Nipmuck people. But I just wanted to briefly speak, and a lot of what I was going to say has already been said, so I'm definitely shortening it up quite a bit. So I'm here to speak for indigenous people taking the place of Columbus Day. And like I said, the Taiino people are the indigenous people of the Caribbean, and that is actually where Columbus had landed and who he terrorized. And like Brittany mentioned, the atrocities and terrible tragedies that were committed by Columbus and his men really is something that it not only quite closely caused the complete genocide of our people, but also, I'm sorry, I usually don't speak, so I'm a little bit nervous. But he, so yeah, so he, it was what our people went through then and what, just like has been said, the generational trauma and all of that, it's within our blood. And I have four children who all are still in school. And I want for my children to learn the truth about Columbus, not only from me, but to have it reinforced by the school systems and not dismissed. So that said, I really, I want to thank my beautiful tribal sister, Charlie Naru, for being here and speaking. And she's been one of those people that has been out there a warrior. And like she said, her town of Newton, her and others, other indigenous people from the area have been working very diligently, though they should not have to, to make these changes and taking time and hours and days out of their life to try to explain to people why having a day like Christopher Columbus Day just doesn't make sense. And I was going to speak about how having Columbus Day is a disservice to the beautiful Italian culture and its people, but Heather did such a wonderful job that I don't feel that I need to reiterate that either. And I also want to thank Brittany, who through marriage is my little cousin, because she is always out there a warrior, fighting with her people and with other indigenous people to make these changes. And I really appreciate wholeheartedly what all of the indigenous people are doing in supporting each other and uniting in this cause. And I really hope that this board and that your community opens their eyes to see that, you know, this, it just doesn't make sense and that what the indigenous people want to have happen is what is right and that they find it in their heart to make those changes. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. And Brittany, did you have something you wanted to add?
I have more of a logistics question. And I'm not sure if this is the time, but I couldn't, I don't think I have a chat option currently.
No, it's fine.
Otherwise, I would have.
Feel free.
So it's my understanding that you will be having another part of this process, another meeting. So I know I must have logged in a few minutes before this meeting started. Has this been recorded? Is this going to be a resource that you can use for educational purposes for your public hearing? Because I will do my best to make it again, but I have to say, I know that activists like myself, I will come to the next meeting and repeat myself. And if we can use a recording instead, that would free my time up to continue my fights on other fronts. So I'm curious, is this recorded and will it be used as a resource?
That's a great question, and the answer is yes, we are recording. And we have a really great community organization, easthamptonmedia.org, that has all of our meetings archived and there. And so that is something that we will definitely share with our fellow counselors, so they can see this. Probably, we won't be sharing it the night of the meeting, but it's something that we will kind of put out for the other counselors to view before they deliberate.
Okay. I think that's always very important. It's hard to disseminate all of the education and the standpoints. And I think that it's a wonderful thing that you guys are able to get everyone together tonight. And it takes a lot of effort to do that, so I know it'd take a lot of effort to do it again.
Yep. Absolutely. So thank you. Thank you. All right, so unless anybody else has any other comments, feel free. So like I said, the process is now we're going to start getting into that, just like the details of, you know, how the ordinance is structured. So it fits into our general ordinances. It's probably not going to be very exciting. So if you don't want to stay, I don't blame you. If you want to stay and see how that process works, you're welcome, obviously. And then what the next step is, we're going to set, once we kind of take a look at the resolution, make sure that's all in order, take a look at the holidays that we celebrate in East Hampton, and that's in order, then we send it to the full council with a recommendation. And then we'll set a public hearing, I'm thinking probably end of February, beginning of March, is what I'm thinking. It kind of depends on what else is on the docket, but that's probably going to be it. And I think that, I wish there was a really easy way to, you know, get everybody's emails so I could send it out, and so people could, if they wanted to come to that, they could. And maybe Counselors Errett has some sort of magic going on over there. Counselors Errett?
I don't know if it's magic, but I, there, I think most of the people on the meeting tonight, and again, thank you for coming. I've communicated with via email, and I've also been active on the UAINE group on Facebook. But I'm pretty easy to find on Facebook, and then also as Counselor Derby indicated, our email, the way our emails work in the city are just first initial last name. So in my case, it would be ozarrett, and then it's at easthamptonma.gov. So we're easy to find that way too. And you can also look us up on the easthamptonma.gov website as well. So, but I'm going, I will be following up with the emails that I have after tonight too. So I will definitely stay in touch with everyone and keep them apprised of future meetings.
Wonderful. That sounds great. So with that being said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull up the resolution first. Counselors Errett, is that, do you think that's the best place to start?
Sure, absolutely.
All right, so let me just open it. And... Oh, that's not it. Sorry, it's gonna take me just a second.
Why don't I follow that up, Mr. Chairman? So as you indicated, you received that email in support of from the UAINE
Yes.
and from Madone Monroe, who authored this resolution, and it's been incredibly helpful over the last, we've probably been talking for a couple of years about this. So I again, wanted to acknowledge my thanks and support on this initiative.
Yes, and that's wonderful. Thanks for saying that. Okay, so here's what we have. And I want to make sure that this is big enough for people to see. So is, how is the Zoom level on this? Do you need it to be bigger? Or is that good enough to read? I could go... How about that? Does that look good? Okay. All right, so Counselors Errett, do you want me to just read through this? And we'll, and we'll just see if the, you know, if there's anywhere we need to make any changes?
Yeah.
Hear it aloud? Okay, so Resolution to Support the Establishment of Indigenous Peoples' Day in East Hampton. Voted that the city will adopt the following resolution, whereas Columbus Day has been celebrated unofficially since the early 18th century and was officially made a federal holiday in 1937 to be celebrated on the second Monday of October with MGL Part 1, Title 1, Chapter 4, Section 7, Clause 18, sending aside the second Monday of October as Massachusetts State Holiday. And MGL Part 1, Title 2, Chapter 6, Section 12V, or maybe 5, I don't know, providing that the governor declared that day Columbus Day. And whereas Columbus Day commemorates the landing of Christopher Columbus in the Americas, specifically in the Caribbean islands of the Bahamas on October 12, 1492, and later on Hispaniola, present day countries of Dominican Republic and Haiti. And whereas the first voyage of Columbus to the Americas initiated the transatlantic slave trade, journal entries from Columbus show his desire to enslave the indigenous populations of the Caribbean. And he subsequently imprisoned and transported many hundreds of people to this end, including trafficking women and girls as young as nine. And whereas Columbus's second voyage of 1493 was one of conquests, wherein seventeen ships were led by him to the New World and his governorship of the Caribbean... and his governorship of the Caribbean instituted systemic policies of slavery and extermination of indigenous populations, specifically the Taino Arawak, people whose population was reduced from approximately eight million to a hundred thousand during Columbus's reign, being further reduced by the continuation of his policies until near extinction in 1542. And whereas the example of the Taino Arawak people is merely indicative of the policies of Columbus and his men, and all told, millions of indigenous persons were exterminated in the Caribbean basin alone. And whereas, through the introduction of European diseases may account, oh, though the introduction of European diseases may account for some of these deaths, starvation and overt extermination policies were mostly to blame, and thus, these atrocities cannot be reasonably attributed to forces outside of the control of the European colonists. And whereas, the devastation of indigenous people, indigenous populations would lead to the kidnapping, deaths, and enslavement of at least ten to twelve million African people. And the profound effects of the transatlantic slave trade and African dessporia continue to be felt to the present day. And whereas, the cultures of the indigenous peoples of the Americas are worthy of being promoted, their history is rich, diverse, and worthy of celebration. The actions and policies of European colonizers of the Americas actively destroyed and suppressed parts of those cultures. And whereas, indigenous people of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial. And whereas, the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts, um, and and this is to be known by the city, is that why we're putting that like further?
Oh, we could probably eliminate that, I mean, yeah.
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're gonna be saying city, uh, you know, uh, later and not saying East Hampton, I think.
Oh, yeah, that that's, yeah, correct, yeah. It's introduced, yeah, okay.
I just wanted to clarify, has a history of opposing racism, this racism serving to perpetuate high rates of indigenous poverty and leading to inequities in health, education, and housing? And whereas, the city wishes to honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, and contributions. And whereas, the District of Columbia, States of Alaska, Louisiana, Maine, Michigan, Minnesota, New Mexico, Oregon, South Dakota, Vermont, Wisconsin, and localities including Somerville, Mass., Cambridge, Mass., Brookline, Mass., Marblehead, Mass., North Hampton, Mass., Amherst, Mass., Portland, Maine, Los Angeles, California, San Francisco, California, Denver, Colorado, Portland, Oregon, Portland, Maine, Seattle, Washington, Columbus, Ohio, and many more have adopted Indigenous Peoples' Day as a countercelebration in lieu of Columbus Day to promote indigenous cultures and commemorate the history of indigenous peoples. And whereas, Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in Geneva in 1977 by a delegation of Native Nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas, in 1990, representatives from a hundred and twenty indigenous nations at the First Continental Conference on Five Hundred Years of Indian Resistance unanimously passed a resolution to transform Columbus Day into an occasion to strengthen the process of um continental unity and struggle towards liberation, and thereby use the occasion to reveal a more accurate historical record. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council votes as follows. One, to establish that the second Monday of October henceforth be commemorated as Indigenous Peoples' Day in East Hampton rather than Columbus Day um in recognition of the position of indigenous peoples as native to these lands and suffering and the suffering they faced during and since the European conquest. Be it further resolved that the people of East Hampton observe Indigenous Peoples' Day by reflecting upon the dispossession of the homelands of the villages of Puktemuk, Nipmuck, and other indigenous peoples of this region who lived here for millennia prior to the arrival of European settlers, and upon the history of the other indigenous peoples who have lived in East Hampton, and to celebrate the survival of indigenous peoples against all odds, as well as to celebrate the thriving cultures and values that indigenous people have brought and continue to bring to our city and the wider community. Be it further resolved that East Hampton shall include indigenous representation from the city in as much as possible, and will also seek representation from indigenous organizations in the area, as well as other East Hampton community representation from segments of the community such as citizens, schools, nonprofit organizations, and businesses. Be it further resolved, East Hampton Public Schools will observe this day with appropriate exercises and instruction in all schools around the time of Indigenous Peoples' Day, to the end that the culture, history, and diversity of indigenous peoples be celebrated and perpetuated. Be it further resolved, City Council. Maybe be a further.
Yeah.
The City Council?
Uh, the the City Council, yeah.
Okay. Um, so be it further resolved, the City Council encourages businesses, organizations, and public institutions to recognize and observe Indigenous Peoples' Day. And uh, oh, man, you're gonna make me say all this.
You don't have to read the whole list. It's a list of people we'll have to, you know.
Okay. Yeah, so um, the City Clerk shall ensure the Massachusetts Commission of Indian Affairs, North American Indian Center of Boston, Indigenous Peoples' Day uh ma.org, um, the United American Indians of New England, Massachusetts Center for Native American Awareness, and the following tribes, um, it's, yep, the Wampano, okay. Um, so the Wampano, the uh, the Sonnet, okay, perfect. Um, Wampano Indian Tribal Council of Aquina, okay, perfect. Uh, all right.
Brittany has her hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, Brittany.
You want some help?
Well, I mean, I I know, I I can do some, I can do most of them, but this one right here, just.
My tribe?
Yeah, that one, so maybe you should do that one.
So, okay, so I I just feel like it's so important to try. It's so important to try, right? So um, you have um some organizations, you have Massachusetts Commission of Indian Affairs, North American Indian Center of Boston, IndigenousPeoplesDay.org. You have all these um non-trivial organizations ahead of the tribes, which is a little problematic for me. Um, but anyways, um, continuing, um, United American Indians of New England, Massachusetts Center for Native American Awareness, the Massachusetts Tribe at Ponca Pog, Mashpee Wampanoag Indian Council, the Wampanoag Tribe of Gayhead, which is Aquina, Nipmuck Nation Tribal Council, including the Hassen Minisco and Natick, the Asonet Band of Wampanoags, the Chappaquiddick Wampanoags, the Chibonaganga Mug, Nipmuck, and Picassit Wampanoags, the Herring Pond Wampanoag, the Seekonk Wampanoag, all of which include descendants of the people indigenous to Massachusetts, as well as the East Hampton School and Committee of the Daily Hampshire Gazette? There's supposed to be a P.
Uh, that should be a P, yeah.
The Springfield Republican, the Reminder, and everything else is not indigenous. I just, I had to say it for your meeting, otherwise it was gonna feel wrong. I'll go back into the shadows.
I appreciate, no, I appreciate that, the help with that one. And I'm wondering, is um do, do we, Counselor Zaret?
I think Brittany makes an exceptional point that that the the tribe should a hundred percent be first and and listed first. I apologize for not, for not um being more sensitive to that. Um, so those should be read first, and then the organization, the tribal organizations, and then the kind of also's, like the the newspaper and the the school committee. If if uh if you are, you and Counselor Peak are open to that.
I I think that's fine. Um, there, there's one thing, though, I feel like, um, and I don't know if I'm gonna say this right, Potom, Potomnuck? Um, but uh, it's not there.
That may be, um, you may have to hunt for Pukemtuk people. Um, and if not, then they may not have an organization.
They probably, they must not have an organization, but.
But.
Because those were the uh, the people that were inhabiting this.
Yeah.
Particular spot.
Some, some tribes are like that because of colonization, unfortunately. Um, I am not a know-all, and I'll be-all at all, so I can't say that, oh, you shouldn't try. But um, yeah, that there are some tribes that are not listed there.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that's great. I just don't know, Counselor Zaret, if we want to make some mention in this um to the the, you know, the indigenous people that were actually in East Hampton.
I think so, and and just, and and um, some of this, some of this language is boilerplate. Um, and so um maybe we should say something to the effect of, and make all efforts to make this known to um uh um indigenous peoples or or organizations not otherwise listed here, or something like that. I don't, if that sounds.
I think that's fine. I I also, I'm like, it's, if we could say somewhere in this, um, that, you know, I mean, that we are inhabiting a land that was inhabited by a a tribe that we haven't mentioned.
I think that's farther up, Mr. Chairman.
Did I, did I miss it? Oh, no, it is there, you're right. It's right here. Kumtuk. I think, maybe that's how you say it, right? Looks like, wait, Tom, did you have something you wanted to say?
It's, I I was holding off until we were done, um, because you were on a roll there. We mentioned Portland, Maine twice.
Ah ha. That's a good one. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Chris has, uh, Chris and Morgan have their hand up again.
Well, I'm sharing, that's way over there. So Chris and Morgan.
We, we have to drop off, but I just wanted to express uh how incredibly impressed with this meeting we were and how excited we are as citizens of East Hampton to have, you know, our, where we live, take this kind of action, and also how uh incredibly impressed I was with the clear, you know, experts and uh, you know, um indigenous folks who did show up and gave all of their thoughts today. It it was really appreciated. Um, so um, I just wanted to say that we're really excited and uh thank you, everybody who put in their work on this. And we'll look forward to the uh um, the the um, I guess, the public hearing.
Well, thanks for joining us. Yes.
Okay, I've already, I've already emailed you.
All right, take care. Yep, take care. Okay, uh, so th- those are good, you know, I think what we'll um, I think that we'll probably, you know, have Barbara maybe do a proofread of this too. She might catch something we didn't catch. Um, Counselor Zaret?
Yeah, something I was thinking about, Mr. Chairman, too, is I mentioned in my cover letter about how we, our city contains so many names of indigenous uh that are are uh from the people who are indigenous to these lands, the Manhan River, which we celebrate, um, you know, Nashawonic Pond. And I'm wondering if there's some way to pay tribute to that it within the um resolution as well, that we we use these names, um, and Nonotuck Park.
Yep.
Um, there there are places that we 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 hold events and we we celebrate, um, you know, events in our town. And these are names that, from a language that, you know, we've, we've um we've related to in a method of of genocide and persecution. And if there's ways to 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 recognize that we we honor the fact that we are we are able to name our, our, our areas in town after these, I just trying to, I I know I'm not articulating myself well, but I think it's important to acknowledge, you know, that when we sit by Nashawonic Ponds, you know, that A, we're, we're inhabiting so land and water that did did not originally belong to us and is rightfully not ours. And that with with a name that doesn't belong to us and and trying to figure out how to honor that. I don't, I don't know how to, how to say that. And and I don't know, Brittany, if you're still there, what your thoughts are on that.
I am still here. I just have some other things that I'm trying to get done as well. Um, so I see activism on all kinds of levels when it comes to specifically school mascots. So again, like, that's kind of where I come from and relate things further out from there. So obviously, um, you have indigenous named places that you're using, you know, and that your community is using. And um, I mean, the entire state is an Algonquin word, Massachusetts, place of the gray hill. Um, and I do think it's really important that those things are acknowledged, because oftentimes, uh, folks at large, especially like non-indigenous people, uh, don't realize where their words come from. Um, people might poke fun at different towns that have funky names, they don't understand um what they're saying, and they don't realize that the name of their state is indigenous, you know. So I think that bringing that forward and embracing that history is just my personal. I can, I'm speaking very personally, you know, I I represent things for mascots. So I would, um, you know, do due diligence, but while you have me here, um, I personally think that it's a wonderful thing to bring that to the forefront and show people and tell people, yes, these are actually um Algonquin words. And I think that it would be um maybe an act of good faith to try and figure out what they mean. Um, for instance, there was a big uh, big misunderstanding with um Webster Lake, if you will, Chibonaganga Mug Lake, it's the longest word, longest lake with the longest name in the world. And um, it just means mutual fishing ground. But um, just quick story, I'm a reporter, uh, you know, many years ago, just thought it would be a great headline to say that it meant you fish on your side, I fish on my side, no one fish in the middle. That's not what it means, so people still think that's what it means. So and and that's harmful, that's a Nipmuck sacred lake, that's harmful, right? So to teach your community what the words are and be able to identify it and to be able to know what they mean, that's, I think, um, a bit that is going to help your community um in total understand, respect, appreciate, and recognize indigenous peoples in your community and else elsewhere. So um, I do think it's important that you guys work on that. I think that's a great idea, um, as long as it's done in a respectful way, because um at times, Nipmuck especially, because I know about it, but other indigenous um symbols and names are not appreciated, but appropriated. Those are two very different things, but to some people, they look the same. So I would just, I would be very conscientious about your process when you're talking about those words. Does that help?
Yes. And actually, Counselor Zaret, you know, one of the things that I was thinking of, um, Brittany kind of triggered it, was, you know, we have that section where we say how we want the schools to, you know, it might make sense for us to include the rec department and and for us to put on the record that we, you know, um, as as things unfold, new projects or whatever, to um create signage that, you know, talks about the the native origins of the the name of Nonotuck Park or the native origins of the name of Nashawonic Pond, or, you know, those types of things that is kind of informational, that people who are there enjoying it might be able to then learn about the history that, you know, is kind of um not maybe apparent to many people. So maybe that's just something that we can add into the the discussion and and send a a letter to John Mason, the Director of Parks and Rec. Looks, yeah, looks, um, uh, Counselor Zaret and then Brittany.
Um, I uh, while we were speaking, I just quickly wrote this language to insert somewhere um to reflect on the meanings and to honor and celebrate the names and language that are utilized for the places in our city and community. Is that?
Sounds good. And and like I said, I think we could even take it a step further and like request specific action, you know, in relation to this. So Brittany, did you have something you wanted to add to?
Yes, um, you're mentioning signage and things like that, and that's um, you know, when it comes to sign, it's usually a word, sometimes pictures and symbols, and that's what I was talking about, like, just be be very conscientious. And I honestly think that it would be a wise decision to get um in contact with other folks like myself, who um, you know, tonight we had uh Ferris Gray come and speak. I speak with him all of the time, because we are always addressing mascots. So there are tons and tons and tons of people um in Massachusetts who who work on this. There is um a commission, you know, a committee against mascots, the Massachusetts um Mascot Steering Committee. There's plenty of people that I'm sure you get in contact with, that um maybe you could also speak with Rhonda. I know she couldn't make it here today because of her power, but um she would be someone to also help guide you um if you ever wanted to put together um educational panels, um if you wanted people just to speak about history. And these are also people that I think would be the best minds to go to when you're thinking about how you want to express these um signs, because they can go really well, or they could be terrible. Not not to say that you're gonna do a terrible job, I've just seen a lot of, I've seen a lot um recently where um things just go awry. So I would say, um, obviously, you need to do uh whatever it is that you need to do in in your town uh with with your um council. But uh getting in touch with native tribes, bringing them into the table, not not expecting them to help you, but to say, hey, is this okay, is this good? Um, I think that's really important, and I think that reaching out and getting into that network that Rhonda and I could probably help you with is gonna help smooth this process over. That way, you won't have to uh take a stab in the dark, if you will.
Um, so I'm gonna bring up, let me just uh bring up the other piece of this. Make this bigger. Okay, so is that, can you see that all right? Okay, and so this would be um, to amend the city ordinances follows, add chapter two, article one in general, ordinances, section two through seven. The city shall observe the following holidays for the purpose of building closures, enforcement, and personnel. Uh, and and now, I'm assuming, Counselor Zaret, that you pulled this from the ones that we are currently observing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so I emailed um Zoe Ingram and said basically, hey, what what holidays do you, do we currently use? What's yours, when are buildings closed and and, you know, schools? And so I could probably have put, well, I put building closures in there. well, I put building closures in there. I probably could have said, said school holidays as well, but, um.
I think this is, I mean, I think this is pretty, I think this is fine.
Yeah, so she, so this is, this is working off the list that, that she provided with me and, for me and, and, um, you know, some of the ones where I, I didn't do it for all of them. I mean, most people know when Memorial Day is and, but I could, you know, I, I kind of included, uh, little, um, you know, reminders for, for certain dates. And, um, uh, but yeah, so this, this, the list and Indigenous Peoples' Day is there after Labor Day where formerly it would have been Columbus Day. But, but we, again, we don't have any ordinance really that specifies what our holidays are in the city. So I think this also ties up some loose ends as well.
This is great. Yeah, I, I, I don't see anything, like, this seems exactly the way that we should do this. So, well done. Councillor Peak, do you have any thoughts on this or?
I think this is great. I've been quiet because you guys put a lot of work into this and, uh, all the folks who are here today had a lot to say and I started, just wanted to listen, uh, but I don't have anything here that I disagree with or have anything to really, uh, add.
Awesome. Okay, that's great. Um, and so, Councillors Errett, is this something that you would be interested in, uh, you know, making a recommendation on tonight? Because I feel comfortable with that, if, if that's something that you're interested in.
If neither of my fellow committee members have concerns, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve, uh, the language to the resolution as well as this ordinance amendment and move it forward to the full council, uh, to, that's interesting, right? So we'd have to set a public hearing for the actual ordinance and would we just include the resolution reading in that? And Councillor Peak, do you feel that the resolution needs to also go to rules or are you okay with, so?
No, it's, it's associated with an ordinance. It's really, I mean, it is a, a resolution, but it's, it's associated with an ordinance. It doesn't require a public hearing, obviously, but, you know, under our re, committee reorganization last year, anything can go anywhere if it's appropriate. And if we're doing a resolution that's attached to a change of the city's ordinances, I really don't see any reason why that has to go, especially through something which, if we're being frank, I, I would be shocked if this didn't pass nine to zero. So I, I don't, I don't see a need to send it, um, to rules for a further, uh, review when we, we've just gone over it with, uh, a lot of really smart people.
Sounds great. So, I mean, it sounds like, yeah, I was gonna say, it sounds like a, a motion could be in order.
But I will make a motion to, um, accept the resolution as written, uh, well, uh, with, uh, do you, do you want to, do you want to talk about? As amended and the, uh, the, uh, ordinance as, uh, uh, to put the ordinance amendment forward uh, to the full council. And I'm just looking at the calendar too quickly. Um, Mr. Chairman, I think that, um, so, I mean, do you want to move, do you want to aim for? So our next two meetings are the third and the seventeenth, and the seventeenth is, um, the Housing Production Plan. And frankly, I'd like to give this, um, initiative space, um, and not get caught up in a bunch. So I would, I would propose March third for a potential, um, public hearing if, if you're okay with that.
I, I am okay with that. You know, I think the, I just wanna run it by the President, but I, I think that that's the one we should shoot for, for sure.
And that way I could circle with the back with people who are, who are gathered here and if people are available to come. Um, but I think also Brittany made an exceptional point that we should, um, find a way to just make, make requests that people watch this video of all meetings. I think there's, there was a lot of powerful words spoken here.
Agreed. Yep. I, I, and so what I can do is as soon as this gets posted at, um, at, on East Hampton Media, I can, I'll send out the link to everybody.
Okay, so, so there's, so there's a motion on the table, but basically then to accept the, the ordinance amendment that's written as well as to accept, uh, the, um, resolution with, uh, the recommended, um, uh, amendments.
Okay, so we need a second?
No second then.
Wonderful. And, uh, any further discussion between us? Okay, um, Councillor Peak?
Hi.
Councillors Errett?
Yes.
And I vote yes to. Motion passes three to zero. So, uh, I will set this at our next meeting. I will set this for the March third meeting for the public hearing. So, uh, again, thanks to everybody that came. We appreciate your, your input. It's really nice of you. Um, and, and I don't, and we do have some other stuff on our agenda. Let me just pull it up real quick, but I, I know that Solar, um, Jeff, the city planner wants to talk to us about that. He has some other ideas, uh, that go in, in addition to that. So, um, I think he wants to be able to come and talk to us about that. And I know we have cannabis delivery. I don't know if you wanted to, um, jump into that tonight. Um, or if you want to just wait for our next meeting where we can give it a full vetting.
Well, uh, it's seven fifteen. Um, I mean, I'd be happy to talk about it. Like, the other, the other bonus of waiting would, was that former Commissioner, CCC Commissioner Title wanted to come to our meeting tonight but couldn't, and that might give an opportunity for, for her to come and present. I, I could speak really briefly that I did talk to the mayor today. Uh, she sent me an email. Um, so not apropos of the ordinance, but apropos of discussing the community host agreement. There, we were given, um, legal opinion that my recommendation, the recommendations to extend the, um, exclusivity period to five years probably won't hold water, um, and that we should just tie, um, the, uh, exclusivity period for equity and economic empowerment and whoever else the state comes up with, just the state regs. Um, so, um, that was helpful to know. And I can, in fact, what I could do is, um, write, change, amend the language so we can review those recommendations at, at a future meeting. But, uh, that's just my opinion. I would defer to the other members.
I, I think that sounds perfectly fine. Yeah.
It's fine for me, yeah.
Okay.
Either of you have questions? I know that last time we asked about, uh, reading, uh, reading through it. Are there any concerns or issues?
I, I don't have any concerns at, at this moment. Um, but I think it would be beneficial for us to have, um, former Commissioner Title, uh, at the meeting. I know, let me just look at our meetings scheduled for February. Um, I think, um, the ninth and the twenty-third would be our regularly scheduled meetings, but I know that we were talking about maybe veering off Tuesdays.
I mean, so, yeah, well, the ninth I can't, um, unfortunately, and when did you, and you said also then the week after that, we potentially have a joint public hearing?
So this, the, uh, sixteenth is potentially, um, and it's not a joint public hearing. Like, well, he didn't ask for a joint public hearing. He asked if we could attend the planning board meeting. So I don't know if that, um, let me just take a look at this again and see what he actually. So he said, before I get too far, could you help me determine if the ordinance members would be available to jo, oh, yeah, that would be for a joint public hearing. For the, uh, February seventeenth at six PM, but I think he meant February sixteenth. So, yeah, that would be a joint public hearing. Sorry, I don't know why he was just asking us to just join his meeting without being a public hearing.
Councillor Tom, Thursdays are, um, tough for you, right?
Thursdays are sometimes tough for me. That's usually when Rules meets, if Rules meets, but Rules does not have like a regularly scheduled meeting. It's as needed. Uh, Thursdays is also, Thursdays, actually, the more I think about it, Thursdays are a bad day for me.
That's fine.
Thursdays are like the only really bad day for me, though. My Mondays are now clear after telecom ended and, uh, Wednesdays are fine if we don't have city council. Uh, Tuesdays sometime, it looks like Tuesdays is when we're gonna be doing ordinance review. So if we wanted to do this not on Tuesdays, that's fine with me, because eventually that'll probably be a, a conflict, but, um, yeah, whatever you guys want to do, just.
How often does the ordinance review meet?
We're not sure yet. Once or twice, it looks like.
I mean, are, uh, uh, is the seven, the seventeenth, we don't have a, um, council meeting. Are either of you, because I don't, I mean, I don't think that this discussion of delivery will be very complicated on this level unless, what do you?
No, I don't see it being super complicated. But then again, there's things that I thought weren't gonna be super complicated that ended up being complicated. So, um, you know, and, and I think I'm almost wanting to shy away from that week. But I guess I'm willing to.
No, I'm not, I mean, I'm also not, uh, so, oh, wait a second. No, I'm sorry, the seventeenth is a meeting. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So it would be the tenth potentially.
I'm free on the tenth.
I am free on the tenth as well.
I mean, does that work? That's a Wednesday.
Yep, let's, let's do, uh, Wednesday, the tenth at six PM.
I mean, I would predict that that shouldn't be longer than an hour. And me and Charlie, we get the planner here too. I, I, I don't think he has any concerns with this, but.
Okay, well, we can, I'll ask him to come and I'll, uh, I'll send the president an email right now asking for that date. So, um, yeah, that sounds great. Sounds great. So unless you guys have anything else, we can, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I moved. Second.
All right, uh, Councillor Peak?
Hi.
Councillors Errett?
Hi.
And I vote yes too. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your, your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Take care.
Appreciate it.